Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Edgecombe County Board of Education and the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners as we meet today, May 31st, 2022. I call for meeting of the Edgecombe County Board of Education to water. Let me say first that board member Kent is absent because she's in physical therapy because of recent surgery. She wishes us well, and this is important to her for her, but she's unable to be here. I will begin with introductions, if you will, and go around the table as we present, introduce ourselves. My name is Raymond Griffith, I serve as Chair and District Six.
Ellen Wilson, District One, Vice Chair.
Hello, Johnson, District Three.
Dylan Worson, District Two.
Corbin Scott, District Seven.
William Ellis, District Four.
Charlotte Quinn, Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Strategic Planning.
Don Edmonds, I can't hear you, official translation.
Before we move back, before we hear the rap from Chairman Wiggins, I would be remiss if I did not, on behalf of our school system and our entire county and city, ask us to stand in a moment of silence as the citizens of Uvalde, Texas, and Robb Elementary School prepare to bury the nineteen students and two staff members who were sentenced to死刑. Let's stand in a moment of silence until. In the midst, in the midst of death, we are always in life, in life, we are always in death. But whom may we seek for comfort but of thee? Amen.
It's always good to make with our food, water. Always like that, that goes first. Don't say a very eloquent. And the things that I would miss, they carry out very well. I'd like to call the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners to order. I'm one of these, Chair, number District Three.
Wayne Adams, District.
Eric Evans, County Attorney.
Wayne Adams, District Seven, Vice Chair.
Paul Harris, District Two.
Brad Wood, District Five.
Saul Ball, District Six.
Ellen Powell, District Seven.
Dylan Worson, District Four.
Michael Matthews, Assistant County Attorney.
Michael Peters, County Attorney.
And I thank them, there's a general side objection from the school board. We will. I'll do that. Yes, absolutely.
Again, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. We certainly going to, we have quite much to cover. We're going to move through that as exponentially as we can so that you have ample opportunity to be able to to have open discussion, ask questions. I wanted to say that on behalf of two people aboard, the school board, I want to say what a pleasure it's been to work with Dr. Bridges and her staff. Obviously, all this issue has brought us together more frequently than most other times, but you've got a great team here. We certainly are honored to be able to work with you. Thank you. So tonight, you're going to see not two separate presentations, but one presentation. I'll open it up here, and then you'll see it again near the end. So the, for. So just to quickly review the agenda tonight, the purpose of the meeting is to give you an update on our community meetings and other information that's been gathered, but in particular, have this time allotted so that you all can discuss this possible transition. You'll see, we will, staff will cover community meetings that we had, a survey that has been available for some time in scale available. There were questions that were received of our board that was submitted to Dr. Bridges and her team. They'll be answering those questions very specifically and directly. Then I'll come back at the end and talk about financial considerations, in particular, the amount of money that the county has been sending to Nash County schools, and we will give you opportunity for open discussion. So at this point, to talk about our community meetings, I'd like to invite Mr. Don Edmonds to come.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to quickly give you an overview of the community meetings that we held over the last month. So our first meeting was held May third at Avenue's Baptist Church, which was from five to six thirty P M. We had about approximately fifty participants at that, at that meeting with a broad collection of stakeholders. Our meeting, our second meeting was held May tenth at Rocky Mountain Dance Center from five to six thirty P M. And we had approximately forty participants. And I mean, the third meeting was held, May eighteenth, at E C C's Rocky Mountain campus. From five to six thirty P M, we had approximately forty participants. We also had a significant number of folks here that were in the room. We did not count our board members, our, our district staff in this number. So this number only includes participants, like by community members, parents, or young people. I just wanted to kind of like pull you closer to some of our key takeaways from those meetings. And so we, we wanted to have a format in which it allowed some intimate discussion and some intimate exchange. So folks get asked, this was a question that they were holding on to, and also like feel, folks feel really seen. So we decided to go with a small group discussion. So we set the meeting off with just a reverberant, like introducing the space, inviting folks to the space, gathering, helping, helping folks understand while we're in space together, going through the agenda. Then we have, and we have evidence entered, and you share, share a little high level historical context of a demerger. We realized that a number of folks still have questions regarding the demerger itself, that's the Senate Bill, and that's another, other question that it has. And so we followed with just kind of like a, a, a high level view of our district, like what we're up to, innovative practices that have taken root, and how we're thinking about a possible demerger. And then I transitioned to the conversation, which I was kind of shared some of the ideas we had, some of the processes we were taking in terms of pulling families closer to the emergency decisions, and kind of what our work had looked like long term, and where we might be headed going forward. So these were the, the three big questions that each table facilitator had. So we tried to break the groups up into about like ten to fifteen, so that everyone could have a chance to share voice. And so each facilitator had some discussion, a set of discussion questions. So we thought these were the most significant questions that would draw the, the large, the largest sets of insights. So we asked one, like, are you a favor of the demerger? Why or not? We wanted to ask that question very directly. That's the first question, given that that was the most important information that we needed to, to count God, God more than any other decision. And then we had, what was the question that you have regarding the demerger? So that someone in the table couldn't answer those questions, or could point them to a direction where they could find answers to those questions. And then our third question is, what would you want our commissioners to know as it relates to the demerger? Again, so that folks have a space where they could share, like, what, what they were thinking about, how they were thinking about it, emotions that they were holding on to, but those could be captured in space. And then each table facilitator just kind of share loudly to some of the big takeaways, the big insights at each table, so that folks could hear this, like, source of conversation, source of chatter that was happening at the conversations. And then we're allowed some Q and A, so we can directly answer some of the questions that some of our participants had. So here's some of our, our big insights. So essentially, each of our tables facilitators submitted their questions. We're able to pull them together, and anything that came up more than twice, we wanted to capture that as an insight. So here are some of the things that we, that came up quite frequently. So, so it did not experience significant, we did not experience significant opposition within those spaces. Many people are still determining where they stay on the issue. Again, we realized that a lot of folks were coming to those spaces to learn more about the demerger, hadn't heard about it, and needed direction in terms of where they might find information. So Mr. Evans', his presentation, and I'm hearing the historical context, were really, really helpful in helping people kind of like, take a stance, or like, kind of find their way in this, in this issue. To realize that the community wants to preserve the, the care and feeder pattern, you're going to see that come up multiple times also in a survey result. So parents and young people really want to maintain their care and feeder pattern. So they don't want to be dispersed across, like, Natchon County public schools, uh, shared schools if a demerger were to take place. Also, they're, they wanted an inclusive decision-making process, so they want to be, like, heard throughout this process, so they don't want decisions to be made arbitrarily without their voices being, being elevated. And so regardless of the decision, parents want their, our children to be cared for. So we found out that a lot of parents, like, whether, like, a transition happens or it doesn't, they really just want their kid to get the types of education experience they deserve. So whether the kids, again, stay in Nash or come over to Edgecombe, they deserve better or they don't better. And then there's a deep curiosity around, like, how this happens, when the demerger will take place, where students will go, and what experiences students, students will have. So there's significant number of questions about some of the nuances. Some of them we had to find, and some of them, obviously, we don't have, we didn't have answers to. But just having a place where they can share those, those questions, it felt really important to, to our stakeholders. So we watched our, our survey results. Each of you should have a two pager on, at your desk. And the two pager, some of them we were able to kind of use as, to, to, to kind of capture the meeting dates and also, like, elevate the survey. So we were able to push that out, out to the community. And, okay, so Rose is coming around now with the, with the surveys. However, if you were to use your phone to click to cue our calls, you also have access to a survey. But in just a second, we'll do a deep dive in terms of, like, what sorts of questions on the survey and what we heard from the survey. So again, directly after our last meeting, we watched the survey, and we were able to, uh, so we were able to distribute those through, like, community canvassing. So we went door to door. We placed them in, like, the significant community hubs. We hung them up on the, on the windows, put them at the countertops, to try to find places where rarely the community, these Rockinout community frequent most. And we wanted to place the surveys in those particular areas so that the folks had access to them. And so we posted on our social media, if any of this, we posted on E C P S website, megaphoned it through our design team. We have a design team that meets that, kind of gives feedback on some of the big ideas that we're, that we're holding. And so those folks serve as, like, some of our key stakeholders in pushing that information out. We've been able to, to partner with a few community activists, we've been sharing that across their social media sites, which is really helpful in gathering some feedback. And we have emailed, emailed all the surveys to anyone we've had interviews with. So today, we had about a hundred and forty interviews. So anyone that we met with, we just sent that right back out to them and asked them to share that widely. Again, we're trying to connect those many people who play. And then our community meetings, we have a significant number of flyers available that folks can take out with them. We asked folks to make sure those take the, take the survey and share, share that survey out within the community. So, so all the survey. So we partnered our friends at, at Edency, using the Reach N C Voices as a messaging tool that helps connect our, our, our school district with those who, who both are active about the demerger. So the, the survey would take about fifteen to twenty minutes. We used a bunch of conditioning questioning, questioning based on, like, personal characteristics. So parents had a separate set of questions, our students had a separate set of questions, our alumni had a separate set, and educators and community members. So based on, like, your, you know, your profile, your demographic, they led you down a different pathway, so that we could gather some significant information from that particular population. So the question has about twenty, is about twenty-two questions on the survey. Got a number of, like, different choices. We had, like, dropdown, we have, got choice questions, ranking, and open ended. So six questions are, like, are demographics. So if you take, so try to, so there's opening, some opening question that helps us, like, determine the user profile. And then it allows only one entry per IP address. So you can't enter multiple, we had to have certain multiple survey entries from the same IP address. So it requires you, you want to enter multiple times, it requires you to multiple, separate devices. So here's just some overall results from, from the survey. So we had about a thousand, sixteen hundred views. We had about a hundred and thirteen messages. You can see, we have a number of people who were opening the survey, but they aren't completing the survey. So we're trying to land our feet there and figure out why that is and how we gain some traction. Mr. Evans and I, we want, we pushed out a video the other day. We were interviewed by Eric Phillips, who's an eighth grader at, at West Edgecombe Middle School, just trying to share some information regarding the survey, regarding the demerger, and all the nuances that, and questions that folks held, just as an innovative way to try and get this messaging out to parents. We had about sixty, well, thirteen, uh, three hundred and ten comments, and you'll, some of that will be in your packet as well. We have about sixty-three of respondents are parents, are students, they're alumni, or educators, or like, community members. We have fifty-three percent of respondents live in Natchon County, and forty-seven percent live in Nash County. Forty-two percent of respondents are parents, and then twenty-five percent are educators, nineteen percent alumni. We have nine percent of community members, five percent are, are young people. And the sixty percent of educators that work in basketball, elementary school, and thirty-eight percent of those participants are aware of the demerger, and there are nineteen percent who share that they are, um, they're not at all aware of the demerger. You have some of the, like, commentary, some of the anecdotes, they're within, like, a, a two-page packet. But we wanted to call out some of these key graphics to kind of share some of these big nuggets, like, how, like, what folks are thinking about, and how they are sharing that with us. So we have, first, sixty-three percent believe students should remain in their neighborhood in schools. So as you can see, folks are, like, one, remain with their care and feeder patterns. So then we also asked, what are the greatest two to three challenges that schools in East Rockinout face? And here's some of the, some of those insights that came up multiple times. So they want better academic programs. This is a quote, but this quote came up quite, quite frequently. But there's disproportionate funding and resources. It's said they have been a concern. And then there's low academic achievement. That came up multiple times. Then we saw that, like, frequently the most, frequently, uh, responded the most. And teacher retention was a huge one. So it's like one thing that's on, that's on the minds of those in East Rockinout. And inadequate facilities, and then, uh, our, our children deserve a better chance. So we heard that a lot, that a kid, they just want better for, for the children in those schools. As you can imagine, a hundred percent of respondents want to be a part of, of this decision-making process. A significant number of, of respondents expressed that they would love to be a part of that, uh, a part of this decision-making process via survey. And then, so we asked the question directly in the survey, are you a favor of the demerger? What you, uh, are you a favorite of the demerger? We have fifty-seven percent that said that you're not a favorite of the demerger, which is about twenty-one participants. We have thirty percent, we're about eleven, who said they are in favor of the demerger. And then we have fourteen percent who would not have a preference. Now, it's important to note here that, like, thirty-three percent, which are thirty, thirty-seven people, only responded to the question. So we had about thirty-seven respondents out of a hundred and thirteen. So one shift who made some surveys moved this question directly to the top of the survey with hopes that that could give us a better pic, big picture of, like, what folks are asking for. But again, that's, that's only thirty-three percent of the folks actually responding to this particular question. And if you want to look at some of the survey results, there is a lot of feed. There's a bit lead at the very top of the two pager. If you want to dive into that, you can see the, the feed, like, updating every time someone, like, enters the survey results. I'll hit the other feed.
So, um, again, thank you all for having us. I do want to just take a moment. I'm appreciative of the questions that we've received from Commissioner Boswell, and they may have been from multiple commissioners, but he kind of did the handoff, and so we thank him for that. One thing I do want to draw our attention to is from February twenty-twenty meeting that we had. We had a PowerPoint for that meeting. I think it was about slide four. And just because I've, I've got a little commentary around it, I want to draw our attention to it. So on slide four, what it says is, we know the decision to bring our systems together is significant, and there are many considerations. And so my, my further comment there was the easiest scenario in, in, is, again, February twenty-twenty is to leave the system as is. And so what did I mean by that? Of course, it's least disruptive to Edgecombe County, it's least disruptive to Rocky Mountain students and families. There are no costs, no renovations. There's nothing to do. So as a school system, that is easier. But I want to clarify kind of what I meant by that. And yes, it is easier, so that's a, that's a statement that is accurate. But what is best? So what is best for the students in Rocky Mountain? As we look at the twenty-twenty-three school year, and we look through all the data that we've collected, the empathy interviews that have taken place with Mr. Cannon, and then just different conversations that have happened through our community. We want to do what's best for our students. I don't think anybody will argue with that. I think further in that document, where we had the, that PowerPoint, there were probably forty or fifty more slides that addressed what are the options, what are the things we would look at, what are the considerations we would make. And one, two requests that were made was one position, and, and I asked for a position, and I asked for at least twenty-four months in order for us to do what we thought was needed and to do it right with fidelity, to be able to make this transitional process happen. And, and as county commissioners, you all were, you granted us that. We had Mr. Cannon. He has the role of going out canvassing the community, talking to people, finding out what are their concerns, and for us to, to begin to unpack those concerns. So again, as we start our twenty-two, twenty-three school year, let's just be clear that we want to, as a school system, of course, the county commissioners will make the vote, they will decide, we will follow suit. But as a school system, our job is to do what is best and what is right for any students that are either in Edgecombe County or become a part of Edgecombe County Public Schools. So that, that is kind of the caveat for us as we open up and continue answering those questions. So those questions, there are quite a few, there are about twelve. Some of us, different folks, will come up and answer, but I'll start with, and we numbered them so that you can kind of follow along. Are there any students residing in Nash County who currently attend the four Rocky Mountain schools, and they're listed, they are located in Edgecombe? And yes, so there are approximately three hundred and nineteen students who reside in Nash County and attend one of the schools on the Edgecombe County side of Rocky Mountain. Two, how many students may be grandfathered in to remain enrolled and graduate from Rocky Mountain High School? And there are three hundred and thirty-nine who are currently a part of Rocky Mountain High School, but there are four hundred and twenty-three Edgecombe County students who are high school students who are still a part of Edgecombe County. So there are four, there are three hundred and thirty-nine at Rocky Mountain Senior High School, there are forty-two at Nash Central High School, three at Northern Nash, eighteen at the Early College, nine at Tar River Academy, and twelve that are at CD High School. So three thirty-nine from Rocky Mountain, but then there are about, a little less than a hundred who are spread throughout a number of schools in, in Rocky Mountain. How many high school students do you anticipate will be absorbed in the current E C P S schools? And where will these students be assigned? And so what we're thinking about, and that question specifically talked about high school students. And so we propose a unique educational model. We shared that with you the last time we were together regarding the new merger. And, and so we don't anticipate students having to go into the high schools, but that, that's an option. So this is one of the options. Five microschools, one hub, and it lists some of the other amenities that were happening in the school. But then there could be students who decided they don't want this track, and they would flesh into our other high schools. And when we think about that, there's some mileage there. So each one of those schools, we just simply use DS Johnson as a point of location, and we gave the mileage for the other three traditional high schools, seventeen miles from north, fifteen miles from Tarver High School, and eleven miles from Southwest. And of course, students could also apply to the Edgecombe Early College, the campus that's in, in Tarver. Okay? And then the next question, four, was what is the farthest distance any school student will be bused? And again, current plan is for Rocky Mountain Elementary and Middle School students to remain in their current assigned schools. And as you heard, Mr. Cannon shared, that was a preference from parents and from others who have participated in the survey and been part of the community meetings. And we shared, the longest distance that a student could be transported would be the seventeen miles. And that was from north to DS Johnson. And here's mileage for the other schools in our district. And again, we used as a point DS Johnson. We didn't use any other point. We used DS Johnson. We've placed all of our other schools, Elementary, Middle, and High School, and you see the variance in the mileage there. And then question five, will students currently attending the four schools in Edgecombe be absorbed and remain enrolled? And so again, survey results, family interviews, insights revealing that families want their children to remain in their current community schools. We'll make an effort to ensure elementary students remain in their current school. Those schools will make students who remain at Parker or Transition. And there was a model that was shared from Mr. Cannon a couple of weeks ago, where there was a seven, eight model, and then there was a nine through twelve model. And question six, will these students currently attending E C P S schools be reassigned? And so our, we do not anticipate that happening based on the model that we've put together, based on the options that we provided. And here is occupancy, it's capacity. We have two schools, those are in the darker mold, South Edgecombe Middle and Southwest Edgecombe High School. If you look at the far right, they are already over capacity. So those schools certainly could not, I think it's very difficult for them to absorb any additional students. And the number of parentheses is how many additional students each of the schools could, could, um, capacity-wise could, could afford to, to have join them. But again, our intention is not to do that. I go back, we do not anticipate the assignment. That, that's not the plan that we have in place. And then what is the comparison of current K A's class sizes in E C P S and schools E C P S may absorb? And this is what we were able to determine from our information from the General Assembly. And of course, this is what we have in E C P S. And then question eight, rank students E C P S may absorb in order from one with the most facility needs to the least. Please, I'm sure you have your hand up.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Um, so when we rank these schools, we base it off of the twenty-sixteen city D survey. Um, but, uh, as of Friday, I believe, um, Mr. Shannon Davis was the maintenance director in Nash, shared us some capital improvements they've made since twenty-sixteen. So, um, we went back and adjusted our numbers. The first number was five million, but they've done about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of work, um, since twenty-fifteen. So as you look at those handouts, you'll see the actual detailed projects they've done since twenty-fifteen up until twenty-nineteen. Uh, mainly, uh, if you look at Johnson, was the, was the biggest one that they did the most HVAC work at. Uh, the first project was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and then the following year they did two hundred and seven thousand. For a total of a little over half a million dollars worth of HVAC work at, uh, Johnson, uh, Bastardville and Parker. Um, the next one is Bastardville, which is around two point eight million dollars worth of deferred maintenance on that building. Uh, then Parker, um, is also at two point two million, and Fairview, um, which is at four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, again, we're not, we're not very sure what they're gonna have on tap for this year, but they did share, um, from twenty-fifteen up to twenty-nineteen, uh, the amount of work they've done. Uh, there's also some more capital projects, which are such things like changing out lights, uh, asbestos for basement, um, changing carpet in classrooms, renovating locker rooms, um, exterior lights, and also some roofing projects. So this is just a snapshot of what they've done since twenty-fifteen. I do not have the current numbers from twenty-one or twenty-two or anything going into this summer. So again, they can get into it, uh, from what we had in twenty-sixteen. So, uh, any questions?
I have a question. The general message around Rocky Mount is that parks, food, tables, asbestos units. Have you found that to be a true statement or not?
I have not found that to be true, but I, I have not seen any documentation on that one. I do know that, uh, Bastard on DS Johnson did have a lot of basement work that needed to be done. And when we toured the building, uh, about two years ago, uh, Mr. Davis did, I mean, he did show me that, uh, that amount of work that needed to be done in the multipurpose room. But I have not seen any reports from the other buildings. But we certainly can reach out and see if they could have any records that they would like that they can share with us.
I have a question, do you have an idea, just a ballpark off the top of your head, how much deferred maintenance is, uh, on our books for Edgewood County schools throughout our entire county?
Yes, um, prior to COVID, we had about fourteen million dollars of deferred maintenance between all of our buildings. Uh, we've made a significant dent in that, which we have about nine million dollars worth of work going on between now and the end of twenty-twenty-three.
So we have about ten million dollars left, don't you say, nine something?
Yes, sir.
And that right there is ten million?
Yes, yes, yes.
So ten million on those four, and ten million for all the other schools just outside of those four.
Correct.
Okay, twenty million.
Yes, ma'am.
So they kind of bounce each other out, you've got just as much need to be done in Edgewood and Edgewood Schools as needs to be done in each more schools on Rocky Mount's side?
Yes.
So for DS Johnson, they pointed out to us when I went on this tour last Friday about the roofing, was that part of?
If it's not on this, I, I can't say, and I'm not saying he didn't leave anything off. This only goes up to twenty-nineteen, but it wasn't shared with us at this point. But we can certainly reach out and see just to verify.
I mean, I saw it.
True.
They did the state because I was wondering.
Did it say what year?
Beginning of last year.
Last, okay, so it, this, okay, this is only up here to twenty-nineteen. Any other questions?
Question nine, I'm one of the latest state performance leaders for students attending the school, the school's ECPS may absorb. This is the latest information that we have available to us. And students wrote in ECPS, so this is since two thousand sixteen, seventeen up to eighteen nineteen, which is our latest data that we have, we'll certainly add this school year's data once that's made available for ECPS.
That's it, yeah. Good evening. So the next question is what plans have been developed to address academic, academic needs of students performing below grade level? And so as you've heard from Mr. Cannon previously, any school design work that we do will be rooted in, really, four pillars. Um, there, the learning will be really community focused, real world focused, passion based, and student driven. And so those pillars were undergirded, any work that we do at the elementary schools and middle schools and with our high school students. Um, very specifically though, we did want to share some of the work that's happening in Edgewood County Public Schools right now that we anticipate, um, we would continue with our students, uh, who do come from Rocky Mount if that's the decision that's made. So, um, we have, as you've heard us say, we've been really focused, taken for the last several years on early learning. We know we've really got to put a, um, a strong emphasis on our students from birth to four. And so you can see some of the strategies that we pursue here in Edgewood County, and we would pursue many of these same strategies in Rocky Mount with our, uh, community outreach to families, starting with children form, our early learning pods, and then opening pre-K up to not only the four-year-olds, but also to three-year-olds. You can see some specific initiatives here that are literacy and math focused. And so, um, for all of our students, uh, we will focus on the science of reading. You heard my colleague Dr. Myrick at our last meeting talk about, um, that all the schools across the state are going to be doing a deep dive into the science of reading so that teachers are well-versed in those principles and so that they can be sure that those are, um, those are just happening as a common practice throughout every single classroom. So that would certainly occur here in Edgewood as well as with the new schools. Uh, for our struggling readers, we would continue to use small group reading support during the day using a program called Reading Mastery. Um, of course, we would use other programs, other strategies that met the needs of those specific students as we got to know them better. And then for our most struggling readers, um, we've been using Hill Rep as an intervention for those students. We would want to expand that and continue to use that with our students in Rocky Mount as well. And then, of course, we continue our opportunity culture work. We currently employ over twenty multi-classroom leaders here at Edgewood County Public Schools. Those are the excellent teachers, they're experts in their field and their craft, and they support new teachers, they support teams of teachers to ensure that all students on those teams are getting an excellent education. And so those folks are very well-versed in literacy, very well-versed in the science of reading. They will support the teachers who are then supporting the students. Uh, then for math, we would, uh, we, we need to be sure that our students understand those foundational math concepts. So that's where we would start, we'd do a deep dive there, make sure kids have that number sense that they need to know in kindergarten, first grade, second grade to go on to do more complex math, and up for elementary and middle and high school. And for our struggling students, we use high dosage tutoring, we piloted some of that this year, and we've seen a lot of success with high dosage tutoring, which means students are in small groups receiving tutoring more than three times a week for more than forty-five minutes at a time. And then again, with math, we would ensure that we have those excellent teachers, those multi-classroom leaders supporting both teachers and students in mathematics. The next question is what obstacles do you foresee in making the demerger work should it be improved? Uh, and I'm certain there are some obstacles that we have yet to foresee, but we wanted to share some of those that, um, that we anticipate now. So in the realm of innovation, uh, we know that we would want to first and foremost obtain restart status from the State Board of Education for all four of our new schools. Uh, those schools are currently not in restart status, but we know that restart does give us some flexibility that has helped us do some of the innovative work that we've been able to do here in Edgewood, uh, certainly at North and at Phillips, you can see the results of that. Uh, those flexibilities are things like budget, curriculum, licensure, and calendar flexibility. And so that helps us, um, really make sure that we're meeting the needs of every single student. And then, of course, redesign work takes human capital and it takes additional dollars as well. And so those are two pieces that we would really need to think about as we move into, um, to the work of really increasing the quality of education at those schools. Now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Myrick.
Good evening. So in addition to what Ms. Swanson was just talking about, um, our curriculum and instruction, when we talk about additional intervention support students, uh, this will be that additional help that they need outside of what will be done in the traditional classroom setting. Additional excellent teachers and tutors, uh, we need those tutors and teachers to support the innovative work as you just mentioned. Also, looking at the school and district support staff, the track record of success. When we talk about instructional coaches and multi-classroom leaders, those are staff members who have a proven track record of having high, uh, performance scores, um, over the course of several years. And they have additional funding for training and development of new staff just to bring them up to speed on some of the things that we're doing in our district, um, currently.
All right, so one of the pieces we hadn't talked about was transportation. Um, so we got our transportation supervisor, um, Ms. Swanson explained that. And we figured out, you know, how many buses it takes technically for, you know, the amount of students during, of course, the camping. So we figured that it would take approximately twenty additional buses to bus the kids, transport the kids to and from school. But we also have to factor in athletics because there's a middle school there and for field trips. So it would also be a six, six additional activity buses, um, to accompany that. Um, also, the current buses used for Nash, you know, we're going to go, could they be transferred to Edgewood? So after digging in and looking into it, those buses can be transferred here. But her major concern is that if those buses, if this decision is made to demerge, will those buses that are in good condition be swapped for buses that are in non-sensory condition? Uh, meaning that we get buses with high mileage on them already, so. Those are some of the things to factor, which means we would have to end up having to find funding to replace those buses sooner versus keeping the buses that are currently serving those buildings. Um, also, we need a place for storage and for a shop to actually work on those buses because having to come all the way from Rocky Mount to Tarboro to service a bus is going to make it a little bit more inconvenient, or it's going to give us longer time on the road than it's more so going to make the business. So we're looking at, you know, can we find a place for additional mechanics? We hired two mechanics that would actually be housed at, at the Child Nutrition Warehouse, which has two bays inside of it already. So we could take that, um, Child Nutrition Warehouse, convert those two bays into like a mini shop or a satellite office for the transportation department. Uh, of course, it's going to be an additional cost, um, to do that, but it just makes more sense to have somebody there than versus over here at Tarboro having to transport back and forth. Um, the larger equipment like a roll back or a, um, tow truck, we could share that because it's not like we got to tow a bus every day. So that would be a cost that we could kind of share for some, a piece of equipment that we can share between the two offices. Um, drivers is the next piece. Um, we got to look at taking into consideration that we currently have a shortage of drivers. So we're having to have between ten to fifteen drivers, uh, daily out. But we're, we're hoping to bank, banking on this being due to COVID because prior to COVID, we had this concern of bus drivers being out daily. So we're having pool mechanics, transportation supervisor, or anybody in the bus, um, the transportation complex that has a bus license to actually fill in and drive buses. So we're figuring we'll be five to six drivers per school. So that's another cost that we have to factor in with, you know, consuming, um, taking over that portion of the count.
So when we discuss potential obstacles as it relates to human resources, again, we have to look at the hiring process, making sure we're selecting excellent teachers to work with our students. Um, tonight, we've been discussing what happens with the demerger as it relates to students, but we don't absorb the staff, uh, from those schools. And so with that being said, city staff, uh, if they're interested in becoming a part of Edgewood County Public Schools, would have to go through, uh, the application and the interviewing process. And so that could create a potential obstacle. Uh, we also look at, uh, whether hiring additional staff, the cultural integration. They're accustomed to doing business one way, uh, in Nash Public Schools, but coming to Edgewood County, we have a strategic plan that is, that sets our vision, our mission for the district as well as our priorities. And so making sure that as new people join us, they are acclimated to the work that we're doing in ECPS. Just by way of information, uh, again, as another potential barrier, currently the teacher supplement in Edgewood County is seven percent. We know that the supplement is the amount that's given by the LEA above the state salary and set forth in the state salary schedule. But in Nash, their current base supplement is ten percent. If you look at the bottom of the screen, you'll notice that in Nash, the teacher supplement increases by their degrees, whether it's a master's degree, an advanced degree, or a doctorate. And right now, there are conversations about raising the base supplement to eleven percent. And so when you look at the example, uh, set before, you're a teacher with a salary of forty-five thousand dollars from the state salary schedule in ECPS, that would have a supplement of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. While as a Nash employee, that supplement based on the eleven percent that's being discussed now will be four thousand nine hundred and fifty. And so while that may or may not seem like a lot of money, um, to those of us who are in the room, it could be a decision, decision factor when staff is deciding whether or not they're going to join, uh, Edgewood County Public Schools should the demerger take place. So just a few things with the HR.
I have a question. Have you, have we put a dollar figure? I mean, I know it's per, how many students, I mean, what would be the total additional cost based on the number of teachers you would require?
Right, so we don't have a specific dollar figure for that yet, uh, because we would go back and look at, uh, the projected number of students, the allotment formula from the state, and then come up with some dollar figures.
And I would assume we need to go ahead and, and potentially look at eleven percent for all Edgewood County's teachers everywhere. So it's not just the ones that may come into work with us?
Certainly. Thank you.
Right.
So question twelve, what is the ratio breakdown to students in ECPS?
Or we have a decision in there in terms of what you want to put, whatever increases your staffs.
But if we wanted to, if we wanted to take it to your, for teachers in Nash to consider coming to teach at Edgewood and make the same amount of money, then we would have to consider raising supplemental pay for all teachers in Edgewood County.
Well, they would have to consider committing to Edgewood County and accept the supplement that we give.
Uh, uh, less money. That they can come work for us for less money.
Power from no job to a job that's given some money, okay?
Question twelve, what is the ratio breakdown to students in these schools, um, ECPS can absorb? And you said your sense is going to be in the public sector, and we need to provide on that last call, current ECPS schools. Question thirteen, how many special needs students are currently in these schools, ECPS can absorb? And this is, they got this new data, this is from two thousand seventeen. And that's what we were able to acquire at this time, we keep digging, but that's for our numbers to present. And I'll ask Mr. Evans to pull it back up for the financial considerations.
So one of the things I wanted to share with you is, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about the gap that Edgewood County now is covering, used to be covered by the city, but I'm sorry, that's fifty percent. Oh, I'm sorry. It's one. It looked like one of my slides. Yeah, I can't explain it.
I just my slide.
All right, so, so, uh, so what is the idea of the cost of a new hospital? Hospitals are going to be the most expensive because of all the programs and the different, um, areas you have to encompass. Um, so right now, if you're twenty-twenty, the average is forty-three million dollars for, uh, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand square foot building. Of course, with inflation, everything going through the roof, so you can add about another ten to twelve percent to that number. So if you look at the cost breakdown for a new hospital, which we're talking about the post office office. Uh, first off, self-help aid was an estimate, which is a turnkey job. This, these are their numbers. Uh, seven point seven-five million, which was, which was also, was purchasing the old post office building. Them doing all the design feed, all the engineering is basically a turnkey job. So this number was given to us, I think, about a year ago, like, you know. So you can also add some inflation to that, but this is just an estimate, it's giving us something to work off of.
Were that whole four hundred and twenty-three high school students the post office?
I, I think yes, but it, I don't think they'll be there all at one time if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so based on the, uh, uh, the innovative model that we presented, so students will have multiple hubs downtown. So this would just be the place for kids, advisory, be the place for kids with like more.
So that's the cost of just one building? And how many buildings are you considering?
So we would have an ECC Early College that's, uh, that's in the General Assembly, so kids will walk on straight there. And we have a few other buildings that we're identifying.
A few others?
Yeah, so not purchasing, but what students will go for their, for passionate experiences.
If, if we don't purchase it, how are they going to go to school in another building?
So we, we ask for the support of our friends over in Rocky Mount. So we, we ask for the support of our friends over in Rocky Mountain City. So for an example, a student might take in their art micro school at the Brooklyn T. Washington Center. Where a student would spend like once or twice a week at that particular center. The other time, students would be out in their, out of their internships. So instead of spending like sixty percent of their time within the internships, would, uh, throughout Rock Mountain. So that's what we, the experience would happen. So we're just like reimagining what Ricky Moore's school looks like and how we best prepare kids for the future of work.
But we're talking about spending eight and a half million dollars on a building that will not hold all four hundred and twenty-three, that's twenty-three students. Correct?
But that's, again, it's eighteen thousand square feet, uh, we have four hundred and twenty-three kids, it could, it could, it could.
Now, I've heard that this building has a structure as well.
Yes, but that's factored into the design. Uh, as far as like the construction of the building, whatever renovations we made, uh, basically would take place as included into his seven point seven five.
So eight, I mean, you're saying add ten percent to that, because that's not.
Well, I'm going to do the inflation.
Ten to twelve.
Yes.
So that's eight point five million dollars for a building that may not hold all four hundred and twenty-three, and add the ten million dollars to the, for the other schools. So we're talking about eighteen and a half million dollars right now? Just the capital to get up and start not counting the ongoing costs, okay?
But then the second option is a fifteen to twenty-year lease at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And that does include the renovations of the building, but we will not own that building after the lease is up. Which is roughly, uh, five and a half million, for, for, we'd be the term of the lease if we go twenty years. Uh, again, these numbers could go up if we decide to do it because of inflation, but this is just to give us a ballpark of where to start, what we're looking at if we were to go with the post office up or the first, um, option versus the lease.
Another point. Now, I heard you talking about other places in Rocky Mountain. I thought the gentleman said that went Rocky Mountain out of, out of education.
Just to give you a clarification, his response was not Rocky Mountain in education, but also that then there used to, you know, statues in the past that would allow cities to, to allow them to do other things that would happen when, when you said it'd be a free, like, two path. So there are different, uh, statues that we might be able to, to get assistance from the city of Rocky Mountain. He's not talking about the city of, in Rocky Mountain. He's talking about educating the children in the city of Rocky Mountain.
Yeah, only talk about.
So we don't.
He, he was talking about a boutique theater of us using that as an, as an educational site for theaters right there on, um, um, telephone trips.
It would have to be Edstrom itself, I think.
They do not have to be Ed, uh, what we're talking about here is, is something that I think this side of the room will make a decision on in terms of where they cite those children, how they use those buildings. Okay, I think that's what we're talking about. It does not have to be an Edstrom form of building, it has to be some type of agreement, a lease agreement or arrangement that the school board makes a, the city or property that they just, for the use of their building. And I think we're talking about, uh, an innovative approach that's been presented to, in the community meetings that some of us saw and some of us didn't see, okay, as it relates to the approach that it appears that the school board, uh, has a will to do. These are some of the things that they're already doing in some of the schools that are in, already out in our county. That's what I think that they're, they're talking about. And I think that the concern is that, uh, that the things that we're talking about, uh, we're talking about the dollars here. And, uh, and I think from where, I think coming from, that we're talking about, uh, uh, four, uh, uh, schools over there that have been, uh, failing, uh, the capital needs that have not been met and have been stayed just by, uh, many of the board that, that will not be there. So if our board does not, if citizens consideration, these schools will continue to deteriorate because they've already stayed. And if, if we did this five years down, these schools would be in worse condition. Okay, because, uh, because the capital group that's needed is not going to show schools. And I think those are the things that, that we need to consider. And if I say a fair times, uh, these are children that I'm going to consider right now, nobody's saying. Uh, they're health education, welfare, government policy. And the failure of these kids, I'm not going to place it on anybody right now, but us, those of us here. Because we have an opportunity here to say that we are going to assume the education of these children that are in our county. And to do less than that, we have a, we have a.
So we have eighteen and a half million, three twenty million for to, to defer capital needs on existing buildings and to buy a building downtown Rocky Mountain that will not hold all the high school students. And then, I can't imagine us spending twenty million dollars on those, uh, facilities at Rocky Mountain and not spending the ten million dollars on the existing buildings in Edstrom. So really, we're looking at thirty million dollars to be fair. And I doubt, and y'all, the school board didn't tell us this, that is there any Edstrom County student today attending that facility not home back to Edstrom County? I can't imagine building out an educational program where we're sending kids to facilities that we do not have in our control. Well, this lease is on, but not in the goodwill of others just to hand it to us. So we need to factor that cost in too. So the thirty million number is not everything. And that, that's just facilities, that's not counting transportation costs and other things.
Which is an argument that is made to us, okay, in terms of whether we're going to, uh, proceed, uh, with the divertive issue. Okay, that means us, those are some kind of board, uh, uh, in terms of, but I think we don't make an inquiry as to, uh, some help from, uh, state and the federal sources in terms of how we're going to find this one.
I want to, let, let me back up one thing too. When Rocky Mountain High was built, wasn't it about thirty-eight million dollars?
Forty-three, forty-four?
Forty-three, so forty-three million dollars was spent on Rocky Mountain High. Thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent of students who attend Rocky Mountain High are Edstrom County students. But we only paid twelve percent. So that means NASH paid ten billion dollars more for the benefit of Edstrom County students. We have to keep that in mind too, we're talking about Red Oak and all that kind of stuff. Uh, you know, we're talking about eleven or twelve percent, because that's kind of what started the conversation. We're on, we're having to send eleven or twelve percent because there's a new Red Oak school. Well, we have a short-term memory though, when we realized that they paid for all of these Edstrom County students to go to a brand-new hospital, and we only had to pay twelve percent. Even though thirty-three percent of the students are Edstrom County residents. So we've got to keep that all in mind.
With that all in mind, we've got four schools to be considering with Edstrom County students in this county. And so we look at what we need to do for those students. They're not given, the human resources are being ranked to those schools. And they're never going to get it, these are our children, and they look like men. We have failed, and we continue to fail if we don't do that. That's going to be our responsibility here. And in the next nine days, I will be asking the school board, as to whether they're going to put the trigger on that. And I'm hoping that I can get support from the school to do that. I think the question, we can make the decision, we'll be triggering. It can be two, two years. I think that the school board will help us determine when it can happen. And we can tell that the, the, the county manager, in its eye, if we make the decision, it can be two years down the road, it could be three years down the road. It can be when we have decided that we have put the resources in place to make this happen.
So is this your contention that we're going to improve the quality of life of each six, six, seven, or sixty-four students? And how do you think we're going to do that?
I think they're going to be better educated, okay? Much better educated in a quicker timeframe. We have looked at, those students are failing, and nothing is being put in there, and these are our students. The county is our responsibility. I don't, I don't think we've looked at the, 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 the money that's going to be coming back to this city, to those students, okay? I think, I don't think we've got the entire people on it.
Can I aggress that? I saw a comment in the public newspaper, this ten million dollars would be plenty of funding for the students coming back to this county, which is, is crazy. There's no way the funding coming for these students because of ADN figures are going to cover what we've run you back over here. When you're looking at figures here, in twenty twenty, forty-three million dollars, I'll bet you can't build that school today for fifty-five million dollars. But that's recent figures we have, and you can go up right on down the line. How many people will go, if we've made the old post office and school, what's the maximum amount of students that could be put in there? A few, we've been talking about it, but nobody said, how many students can be put in there? Can anybody answer that question?
Well, I think that, um, in terms of the new models, the H K voucher, uh, everybody talk about being the same school.
I, I get that, but I'm trying to find at least a figure of people that it could hold in a bit worse, the best conditions, whatever you want to call it. Nobody has said that figure, just.
Yeah, we're looking at, if, if all the kids are in that one, we're going to approximately like two hundred and fifty students. So that is a factor in a hundred and eighty students that were anticipated to be in, uh, Rocky Mountain early college.
We also need to make a pledge as well, that if we want to improve their education, and we feel like they're not getting a good education from the state of Carolina, we're only responsible for facilities. Is that we'd have to pledge that we would not hire any NASH teachers who currently teach that, because obviously they must, must not be good teachers.
I, I don't think we can make a pledge, John.
I mean, if, if it's the same, if we do nothing but hire the same teachers to teach in the same classrooms, the same kids, then we've got the same results.
I think probably, this question now is, 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 um, in terms of those schools and the uncertainty, uh, what's going to happen with them? And so I think the problem is, uh, a lot of, a lot of people don't want to necessarily go there because they don't know if demerger is going to happen, because they might be out of a job. So, so they really don't know what's going to happen to their children, so I think that's an issue. I don't think it's my intent to state that the teachers are not qualified, but I think the most experienced resources are putting out of schools, okay? I think that, so I don't, I'm not saying, making that statement, that they're disqualified. I don't think, to me, uh, to, it doesn't make, I cannot accept any, uh, position that would help me understand why we, this board, cannot perform statutory responsibilities. And the statutory responsibilities are making sure that we educate our children, our county. And the children that are in this no man's land that are being denied. And we have an opportunity here to pull that trigger, okay? And I will be, still be asking the school, we can make arguments, we can make arguments for all of them. And it's not necessarily in this league that we, I think it's a league between us on, in terms of, and our league. And I, and as I stated, I will be putting it on a gentleman that we can make these arguments, and I'll be for or against in terms of the league that we hold. But it's our job, we find money to do everything that we need to do, we find money to. We've got, uh, the federal belt website at Kingsburg that we put, we find money when it's requested to put there to make that happen. Uh, so it depends upon where we put our, our, that's where we, this board would put our product, is that.
Dr. Bridge, I noticed on this page you told us about all those sports schools. Do we have a letter grade for the schools currently in Edstrom County?
I'll share those because you look at, I do place them there, I can show you the change over time, as far as.
Can I get clarification on one thing? Who are going to offer, what are you going to call it, to grandmother some students? That they may stay in the Rocky Mountain system? What's the terms of that? What, are you a senior, a junior, or sophomore?
Yeah, so we talked about having K B students come over and having high school students stay, that was an option. And then they would stay and graduate as they became eighth graders and ninth graders who didn't be our first high school students.
So we really don't know how many people would take that option if we move forward with this?
We do, we do not, we can't know if they would offer.
They have to eventually all take it, because we can't have a hybrid deal moving to the future.
No, that's, that's right.
I mean, we either pay eleven or twelve percent or we don't. I mean, there's a transition period, but it's got to come to an end.
But that's per key, that's per student, depends on how many don't take it or take it. To, to Mr. Oswald's question, and I'm not to be absolute education. Yes, we educate, we, we can assure you that we can make the quality of life for those students better because our track record has shown that we educate the same kind of kid. The other thing is, we can't say that we won't take all of those teachers and, and dump them in the same, there are some good teachers there. They don't offer, they don't, they, they don't offer the programs and the innovations that we do. And they're not trained as we do, so some of them could possibly come. We can't say that we wouldn't hire any of them. That's why this, uh, Pittman said the energy process is, is important. So there are some that we would hire, but we couldn't make a blanket statement saying that we couldn't hire any of them or that we would hire all of them. But I can assure you that from our track record, from the time that Dr. B has been here, and I think yes, that's eighty-four, before she got here, I consider we are quite capable of making the quality of life for those kids, that I can assure you of that. And no question. And it, that's, that's one of the options that we have. And the other, the other option is, as you just stated, in terms of, of, I think we've stayed on record, and it's been some agreements that, for that kind of, in terms of, all of the schools do a certain present in the high schools will have, could be, have an option, especially high school. So there is no immediate need to help the high school, uh, with, unless there, it could be the ongoing, there'd be a, a timeframe that we could do these things because the children that are present in the high school, so the only, this, so, so the only thing we'd be concerned by immediately, depending on what school, but they, they would be those students that are in the, uh, maybe one to eight days or, these are, these are things that I think once we make the decision that, who, what we discuss, and we discuss in the, in that kind of school system and policy kind of message in terms of what common agreements can be put in place to keep those students off, to let those students, let those high schools. You know, I think what we're staying here, and we can see, we're staying, those of us that, some of those that are speaking, speaking from a support position, and some of us speak from a non-support position, uh, probably the whole issue. And so, and, and, and again, uh, these are, are, are the, all the arguments that we need to have. And, but I think that, uh, let me ask this question. Are there any questions from our board that, uh, Dr. Bridge and the school board need to answer that have maybe not been answered in this presentation? For example?
And I may have, you may have to go back and get the answer we're here to ask. NASH, NASH school system uses their same program to educate their children throughout their entire district. They don't, they don't have necessarily a hybrid innovation district and then a traditional school district, right?
I, I don't know that.
And what I'm, what I'm getting at is, if we look at all the NASH county schools and how, what their grades are, uh, by state standards under their current traditional, most likely, program of education, I'd like to know, just like Mr. Oswald asked, what the grades are per school in NASH, and what grades are per school in Edstrom, and get a weighted average based on students, based on, on the total district, to see if their, if their way of educating the whole of NASH is a subpar way of educating, since we think we can do so much better than NASH does today. Does that make sense? I mean, if, if NASH and their program is failing our kids, why is it only failing the kids that are Edstrom County residents, not failing all the kids that are NASH County residents?
And, and, and they're not just doing that, you can look, the state department has, uh, it's, it's, it's public knowledge that they, uh, uh, for what they've done over the years. Uh, it, it's published, and we would know where it is at.
Well, I'm just curious, why, if their, if their whole system is not doing well, because they use the same program in all of their schools, much likely.
I, I don't know, I've not heard that that, that whole system was not doing well. I, but the only statement I made, and I made that, is that the, is that, for, as a matter of record, the schools that are serving our children in the Edstrom side of the family.
I'm just saying that whatever program they're using to successfully educate children that may not be Edstrom County residents, I wonder why. that may not be Edgcombe County residents, I wonder why our kids are not succeeding at the same rate as the others?
I, I, I think maybe some of that is, 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 is maybe we have an innovative approach to serving our kids a few times.
Just for clarity, um, is it or is it not true that any low performing schools, any students in either system, this is a statement, uh, can't choose what school they go to? I mean, if you, you don't have to go to a low performing school. You have the option to go to any school. Is that correct?
Within their county.
In their county.
In their county, okay? So in this situation here, there may be students on the Edgcombe side who choose to still go or in the, you know, in, in, it's talking to the city house can still go to an Edgcombe County school, correct? Because we have students in Edgcombe County that are attending, according to this data, the Nash County. Right?
Well, I, let me say back there, they're still in the same school system.
Right.
If they come across here, they're in the same school system. So that's a whole, that, that's another process, which is a major thing. That, that's a whole school board issue in terms of what they have to get accepted and those kinds of things. So I, I don't, I don't see it happening exactly, but I think the, the major question before us, okay?
And the reality is, Edgcombe County, Edgcombe County. So many years we've done it a certain way. In order for us to move out this hole that we're in, we're going to have to open our vision. These children belong to us. We're going to have to make the best decision. Everybody's talking about money now, you know, that's just the bottom line. But if you're going to keep putting the obstacles in the way, we can never move forward. The thing of it is, all we can do is present the data that these folks have been collecting and show you that basically, based on where we are, we cannot stay there. I'm seventy-five years old and it's been, you know, everything changes. We are reimagining, are re, it's a new normal coming about. So if you can just, um, if you can take away the obstacle that you see and hear some of the positive things that can be, I think we might arrive at the same place. We all have different opinions, but please, please, please. I graduated from Edgcombe County School. I don't take a turn, I'm bad. But we've got to really realize that we're in a new day and we're going to have to look at it real closely and dollars sign, yes, are important for what we're really talking about, the children. Think about, these children belong to us. We're going to have to make the best decision that we can based on the data that we have. We don't know all of the answers and you all have some good questions, but don't, don't abandon it before you really hear. Those of us who've been in it and, y'all can say what you want to. We darn, but we darn pretty good at Edgcombe County. We've educated children well as well. But when you start comparing, I, I, I caution you to stop comparing if you don't have the actual numbers. And let's talk about the what is. What if we have students on the Edgcombe County side that we're trying to make the best decision? Is every, every point, every decision going to be good? No. But we're going, if we, if we put our minds in a positive manner and say, let's see if we can all get on the same page, at least get on the same page to begin here with the data that we have, I think we could probably kind of slowly walk it through. And I think sometimes we may be seeing the same thing, but dollar sign might be pushing us left or pushing us right, we got nothing more to. But just, just keep in mind, these children, we've got to make a decision. And you, for every plus, you can find a negative if you want to. But if we could really, please, just stand still and just really realize, these are our children. What is best solution that we've come up with in this room? Everybody didn't come from the same place, so we all got different opinion. But let's, let's bring the opinions together and begin to say, let's see how we can do it. And as we look at that, we can stop taking all the, uh, this is going to happen, this is going to happen. That's going to come up anyway. But if we all start on a page of, we're talking about real children that we've got to make a decision about, let's all own those children and do the best thing that we can to make sure that we make sure every child is educated as best he can.
I think Dr. Bridge has more slides that you can do.
Does it need more, um, if you all, any, uh?
Sure, so you all just alluded to some additional dollars that would follow the students if they did come to Edgcombe County Public Schools. And so just wanted to quickly touch on that. So, uh, E C P S can receive an increase in federal funding, state funding, in addition to any local funding that you all would allocate. And then, of course, we seek to raise additional federal and state rate funding and philanthropic funding to do some of the work that you heard about tonight. And so just a few numbers to put up here. So you can see the current Title One federal funding allocations that the schools in Rockin' Mountain that we're discussing received this year. And so this totals to about four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that these schools are receiving in Title One federal funding to support their academic programs at those schools. In addition, this is, uh, this is data from nineteen twenty, but in that year, about six hun, six thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars was allocated per pupil in Nash County Public Schools. So if we multiply that times sixteen hundred and forty-four kids, that's nearly eleven million dollars in state dollars that would come to Edgcombe, uh, to help us educate these kids. And then finally, we certainly see additional funders to support this work as well. I mean, you can see some examples up here of some funding that's been raised in Edgcombe County Public Schools, nearly two million to support the work of the North Philip School of Innovation that's come from local funders, but also from national funders who have been inspired by this work and supported the work that you've heard about over the past few years. And then we just listed a few of the other grants that we've received from various sources. So, um, from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, we've received two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in grant funding just for the summer. Uh, some smaller grants from, uh, some other funders like Teach for America. We have a five hundred thousand dollar Learning Hubs Innovation Grant that's supporting work at Princeville West and North right now. And then our Scholar Teachers Scholarship Fund, which we have over eight hundred thousand dollars committed for those students. So again, just sharing some of that, um, track record that Dr. Johnson spoke of. And of course, we continue looking for dollars like this to support our Rockin' Mountain students if they were to, to be on Edgcombe County Public Schools students. And now, this is Mr. Evans' slide, so pass it over to him.
And so just quickly, I wanted to read this. You've seen this, uh, formula calculation. This is updated for next fiscal year of how the gap funding is calculated. Um, you can, we compare what Nash County projects to allot to the schools for the coming fiscal year. Take the number of students, that's, uh, that's the Nash per student allocation. Then we look at what Edgcombe plans to appropriate, two point one million. As a note, this number right here, we'll see it in just a second, it's not changing several years. So that number right there is the number that our board has some say, so you, you vote on this number, um, with your budget. And, and by the way, these number of students based on last school year, the A D M for actually current school year, um, and then that's the per pupil allotment from Edgcombe, and that's the difference, the gap, as, as we'd call it. So you take that gap and multiply it by our number of students. And so that gap is, this coming year, a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I want to show you, and this is the gap we were just talking about here. Um, so this right here, twenty, twenty-one, um, that's when we had to take over that gap from City Rockin' Mountain, per Senate Bill three eighty-two. Uh, you'll see that there's a, almost hundred thousand dollar jump here in, in the gap for this upcoming year. And that's because, as, as we mentioned, uh, Nash County Board of Commissioners have indicated, they plan to give additional funding to raise the supplement by one percentage point. And, uh, and so because of Senate Bill three eighty-two, then we have to pay that regardless of what it is. So if Nash County decides to, to raise it two percentage points, three percentage points, or whatever it might be, uh, Senate Bill three eighty-two does not give us any veto of that. Uh, you can also see here in this section, this is the annual, uh, capital. So each year, we look at what the annual capital appropriation that is, the amount that's given to do repairs or what have you for that year. Also for debt service, that includes some debt that's been on the books for some time, uh, like, uh, the Rockin' Mountain High School, as well as some new debt that just recently come along with the, uh, uh, Red Oak Elementary School. And that's what our total debt is. So you can see what, uh, the county has been sending over to Nash County, uh, in, you know, since eighteen, nineteen. And so, you know, again, from, from my perspective, the difficulty is, as I'm working on the budget and I look at what the request is from Edgcombe School System, and we have to make a decision as to, are, are we able to fund what they have requested? Like last year, um, they requested nine hundred and some thousand dollars above what we were able to give. We gave the same amount as we did the previous year with the exception of the additional hundred thousand dollars to cover the new position. And so, um, we have, we have the ability to say yes or no, but because of Senate Bill three eighty-two, we don't have that ability, um, when it comes to, uh, Nash County schools. And, and so I guess the only place I would leave it is that I think we, we've heard some, at least two things here that's somewhat concerning. And whether or not de-merge is the fix for it is for, as for our board and in collaboration with the school board to decide. Uh, this funding, Senate Bill three eighty-two, that, that's a challenge for us, I believe. And we, we talked about that, uh, in some great deal. And I think you've also seen and heard tonight some concerns about those four schools and their performance. So, um, and obviously, this is a, this is a huge decision for the board to make. Um, to, whether you choose to do it or not do it has, I think, ramifications in both way, in both directions. And, and certainly, I, I hope that we together have provided with you a, a lot of good information for you to make as informed a decision, uh, as you possibly can. So that's where we're leaving it. Um, certainly, there are questions that you have that were not answered tonight either by ourselves or by our friends at the school system. We certainly will be happy to either try to answer those or at least jot those down and, and return at some point very soon to answer those questions. So, yes, my.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I cannot sit here, listen to what I'm hearing without sharing this company. I don't know if any of you were there from two thousand and three, but I'm going to tell you, the Edgcombe County Board of Commissioners, along with our school district, at that time, Dr. Stone was the superintendent. And we launched a bond to help raise funds. The bond was something like twelve point four billion, something like that. Anyway, we had the president of the Board of Education to come to Edgcombe County, speak with us and discuss it. And she decided that this was the greatest idea in the world to help get funding because of that twelve point four being three point four was given to Nash County to take care. And at that time, there were five schools on Edgcombe County side in the track to do capital outlays, improve those schools. And that same individual, after they got the money in their pockets over there, decided to vote with the majority of her board to spend it on that new Rockin' Mountain High School that everybody's talking about. And, uh, Mr. Evans, have we finished the bond? Have we finished paying that bond out?
No.
See what I'm talking about? They got that money and that needs to come back. That, that amount needs to come back.
You've got to remember that thirty-three percent of the students that attend that forty-three million dollar school is fifteen million dollars we should have sent. And as you just said, we only sent them three and a half.
Well, we won't.
So they, they actually, they actually gave ten.
I keep saying that.
They probably going to ask for us to get a million ten million.
Maybe we can not send enough, but we sent according to what we raised.
Right, but I mean, maybe we need to, maybe we need to send, uh, Nash ten million dollars because I'm.
No, we don't need to send Nash anything. We don't need to send.
We got to do, we got to do.
Well, you know, we got one kid in, we still have twelve percent.
See what I'm talking about?
But you got, you got thirty-three percent of Rocky Mountain. Ha, you got, we lose that. No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
Looking off another school.
Do the math, the math is simple.
Well, uh, she's going to pay you money off.
No. If forty-three million was spent in a high school and thirty-three percent of the students are Edgcombe County residents, then we should have paid thirty-three percent of forty-three million, but we didn't. We only paid twelve percent.
What they did to take is that the state gave them twenty million on the top. We all had, they all had to do this, trying to do that. State gave twenty.
I'm supposed to do that?
I do. State gave twenty, they only had to pay twenty three million.
Well, now, out of all the conferences we give, you know, I think the solution to it is, you know, this issue's been going on all my life in terms of.
Twenty-one years.
Of, of.
That's how long it's been going on.
This two school system, it's been up going. And I think the Nash County has shown us that they, that, that real, that they were really interested in.
Yes, sir.
It named, it changed the name of the system from Rock, from that rock, uh, to Nash County School System. They withdrew out of the behavior policy. So they have said to Edgcombe County, we've moved our relationship with you. And we have a commission that says we, we need to send them some additional, my, their additional money that we talked about, we need to send them to you there. So I'm saying to those of us, we got the, the, the Tharsh to do it. I'll be asking instead, just for the other thing. And we can, in this discussion and this issue, which has plagued this region for all of my life. And the solution is to de-merge. And that's what I'll be asking. This, uh, particular review, uh, sometimes resonates, uh, ninety-eight. What I ask the board now is, uh, any, and both of us, any other questions or comments that individuals need to make to each other, uh, do additional information? If there any additional information that we need, you would have to say it to me. I want to ask you to approve.
My question, the question that, um, Mr. Luke asked was to give the grades for Nash, give the grades for youth schools and future.
For most schools, right, right. We'll ask Mr. Evans to, but if there's any additional ways he'll ask, still be asking that of the school board. I think it's, you know, to, to, it's up to us to make a decision. We need to go, you spin out into our, and it can be, it can be up and down the city in terms of what we may. If it's up with the religion, down, I'm not for religion because I'm a taker of this board, for that trigger. Uh, any other questions from anybody or comments?
We got one comment.
Yes, sir.
Michael speaks on my line.
Yeah, and that's what we're here for.
Just remember one thing. We talk about this money, we talk about these kids, and we talk about this land, this city, whatever. And when, if we de-merge, you have really the last nail in the coffin to separate the city of Eden. The final nail, that would be it. I've lived in this county my entire life. I've watched children die down. I had three children graduated, they're some kind of schools, all who are very successful. But this is the last nail in the coffin when we do this. You have separated this forever in every state. It won't just be a very, every life will be separated. It's a lot more than kids, it's a lot more than money, but it's a great part. We don't need any more separation.
I don't agree with.
That's my final comment.
And I, I don't agree with.
That's fine, you totally agree with me.
The nail.
I don't agree with you.
The Senate, the Senate Bill three eighty-two drove the nail, it changed the name, and it put us in this position.
That's right, we got enough.
And the option is ours.
That's right.
If that nail separates us, I'm going to try to drive.
Let me have, uh.
Go ahead.
I wrote that. Um, I believe in the term of that, I'm confident that Dr. Bridge is the channel whatever he's given to her. I believe the children, and they're Edgcombe County children, I want them to stay in their neighborhood schools. Those schools belong to Edgcombe County Public Schools. Because we're going to make sure they're going to get the education they should get. Because we're gonna make sure they're gonna get the education they should get. Um, and the young lady said, when they get rid of the hiring teachers or whoever, what they go through may be different from restraining the Nash County students. We're gonna be trying to get the best of the best, so that all of the children have something, all of them. But I really believe that, um, of a town on this, and the only way to do that is to be Edgcombe County Public Schools. And those four schools have to be a part of it, and one group of people in charge of it. And then, too many people, too many different ideas. And I think one group should be the one to determine how successful those children become. Um, but I do believe that they need state and community schools, that we do need to be lobbying state, uh, Congress, whoever to help us make sure we get those where they should be, as far as gap improvement. And Edgcombe County, make sure that we have the right teachers, or the classrooms, so those children.
A lot of these, uh, whether they can qualify for college, I'm confident, and type of law requirements, application, processing of the application, and then the fair and equal treatment, and so, uh, and I'm, I'm quite sure that most of those teachers are gonna qualify for college, I believe.
But we don't want teachers that don't wanna teach the kids on Edgcombe County side. When they sign up in Rocky, we want teachers that wanna teach children.
Any other comments or questions for anybody? Anybody have comments from this side?
One last thing I have to say, and that is, the city council in Rocky Mount, I believe will support Edgcombe County side of, of schools, because I have to pay taxes on both sides, Edgcombe County and Rocky Mount. And they need to make sure that they're participating, I've already discussed it with them. And they will support our schools.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else to come to this thing? Is there anything else from our board?
What you do is, um, Zachary?
Questions? All the care that they know about goes out to us.
Aye.
For both. All right, from the Edgcombe County Board of Education, I believe in Dr. B and her staff, I believe in our each other. One thing, motion to adjourn.
Evan Wilson, motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion is set for the adjournment of Edgcombe County Board of Education. You've heard that motion is set in front of the discussion hall, and ladies, here in that those in favor, let me go by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the black sign, aye, and then here, that was great, aye.